Good evening and welcome to the February 10, 2025 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one topic for discussion, and it's about proposed changes to housing and community development programs. And I'm just going to turn it over to Tom Longo and Seager. Get us started.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to turn it over in a moment to my housing team that has been working hard on these proposed changes and wanted to give the community an update on some changes they're making to our down payment assistance and multifamily investment loan fund for multifamily apartment owners that might want to make investments in their properties. And I'll turn it over to Brittany Marinello and Maureen Walker to take it from here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, my name is Maureen Walker, and I'm the Program Coordinator for the Division of Housing within the Department of Community Neighborhood and Housing Services. So thank you for having us tonight. As Tom mentioned, we're going to be talking about two of the housing programs, the Mill and also the Galp. I did want to provide a bit of a general overview of what our division does. So the Division of Housing and Community Development maintains comprehensive housing policies and programs that provide fair, affordable options in homeownership and rental. The first is the emergency rental and utility assistance. So to provide a little background on each of these, the emergency rental program offers to eligible low and moderate incomes, so up to eighty percent of the area median income. Households who are renting, they're able to access up to three months' rent. And this program prioritizes households with minor age children, senior households, and households with illnesses or disabilities that might impact their ability to work. And that's fully funded by our HUD Community Development Block Grant Funds. Additionally, the homeowner repair program is funded with our CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Funding, and that's a partnership with Rebuilding Together Montgomery County, who they actually administer the program, and we oversee that. That is for eligible households who are homeowners, who are at or below eighty percent of the area median income, which is the maximum for our CDBG funding. And those repairs can be up to $15,000. And those repairs include accessibility modifications, energy efficiency upgrades, weatherization, HVAC systems, plumbing and electrical repairs, and also roof repairs. Additionally, we have the moderately priced dwelling units and the workforce housing units, both rental and for sale. MPDUs are offered as rental and for sale, and workforce are only offered as for sale. MPDUs are for households who earn up to eighty percent of the area median income, and workforce units are for households who earn up to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. So new developments are required to have a certain percentage of MPDUs and/or workforce units. For our rental, it's fifteen percent is the requirement for MPDUs, and for sale, it's seven point five percent for MPDUs and seven point five percent for workforce. And rental properties are monitored annually to ensure compliance. So the two programs we'll be discussing tonight are the two last bullets. So again, that's the multifamily investment loan program and the Gaithersburg Home Buyer Assistance Loan Program, so the Mill and the Galp. So the changes that we are proposing or are discussing tonight align with the city's strategic plan to pursue strategies to provide a mix of housing options for a variety of income levels. Specifically, the changes to the Galp would accomplish the following key action items in our strategic plan. One is partner with a third party to administer down payment assistance, and the other is complete activities of the housing element, which was adopted in September of 2023. So those activities include, as you can see on the slide, considering Galp programmatic changes to address any barriers and work with partnering local governments if changes beyond Gaithersburg are needed, consider ways to strengthen the city's Galp program, including larger loans, increased outreach and technical assistance, and explore other sources of funds to be combined with the city's Galp program, which includes the state of Maryland, which is what we're here to discuss tonight. For the Mill, this one's pretty straightforward. It's just implement the Mill program. So it was actually implemented in April of 2024, but we haven't seen any interest in that program. So we're really looking to revamp it to better market that program. So we're going to start with the Galp, which again stands for the Gaithersburg Home Buyer Assistance Loan Program. So Galp provides closing costs and down payment assistance to first time home buyers. Just to note, the first time home buyers means anybody who has not owned a home within the past five years. And it's for anybody who's purchasing within the city of Gaithersburg Corporate Limits, who either lives or works within the city of Gaithersburg. It started in 2005 and has since administered 334 loans or grants. It started off as a grant program. These payments are zero percent deferred loans and are repayable once the property is sold or transferred, termination of the property as the sole resident of the borrower, failure to comply with the city's review of borrowers' use of property as the sole residence, refinancing, purchase of another residential property, or recording of any lien against the property for more than $10,000. So any of those would trigger repayment. So as I stated, the Galp started as a grant but changed to a loan in 2008. It is funded by the Community Development Block Grant, HUD, CDBG funds, the city's Housing Initiative Funds, or HIF, and the city operating funds as well. So funding sources are determined by the household income. So anybody who makes under eighty percent of the AMI would utilize the CDBG funds. Anywhere between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent would be HIF and/or city funds. This is a revolving fund as loans are repayable. And there has been a steady decline of loan applications since 2003. So we have on here, sorry. So for fiscal year 2020, there were thirty-seven loans. For fiscal year 2021, there were thirty-four. For fiscal year 2022, there were thirty-seven. And as you can see, for fiscal year 23, there's thirteen. For this previous fiscal year, there were six. And for the current fiscal year, there are six at the moment. So I'm going to turn it over to Brittany, and she'll talk about why we're seeing a decline.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Brittany Marinello. I'm the Housing and Community Development Division Manager. Now for the fun part of the presentation of why we're trying to change some things. As we all know, right now, the housing market is going through a tough time, whether it's halting in building homes, whether it's the interest rates, or whether there's a high demand of homeownership. However, there's not much of a supply. Based on our research, there's two main theories. The first one, the home prices and the interest rates. The home prices have increased drastically over the years, and that can be reflected in the numbers of down payment assistance requests that we've received since 2021 to current. As Maureen stated, we're up to, right now, only six applications for down payment assistance. And that's usually because homes are costing four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, and many people, the interest rates are higher, make the home higher than their rent, and that's not the goal that they want at this time. Theory number two is the high demand for homeownership, but there's a low home supply. It has first been predicted that in 2025, we will see more homes being built. However, with the recent changes in administration and tariffs and different changes in the workforce, they're now predicting there might be a slowdown in the home building forecast, meaning without many people being able to build with the tariffs on aluminum and steel, there might be a slowdown in building, and that would also drive up the cost as well. So we are also theorizing here in Gaithersburg, we might see that slowdown as well, people being interested because the prices might be too high, and there might not be enough of a supply, just based on economics. So we are proposing to partner with Maryland Mortgage Program. This program helps home buyers achieve homeownership by making purchasing and owning a home more affordable. This is for first time home buyers for the lowest thirty-year fixed interest rate available for a home loan. With this partnership with the city of Gaithersburg and MMP, the city will benefit by drawing down our funds from HUD through our system faster and quicker, which will keep us in compliance. We would advertise to a larger scale of city of Gaithersburg residents because there will be targeted ZIP code advertising to different homeowners or potential homeowners, and it would increase the number of first time home buyers throughout the city by lowering the requirement to meet the federal and state guidelines of instead of a five-year first time home buyer year limit to three years, meaning if you owned a home within the past three years, you would still be able to qualify. In partnering with MMP, the city would enter into an MOU through vigorous going through the legal department, of course, making sure that both parties are meeting both their objectives and reporting requirements based on HUD standards. The funding for this program, if we do partner with MMP, it will be strictly just the CDBG funding of $375,000. This is a total from fiscal years 2022, 2023, and 2024. We have a lot of funding in those fiscal years because of the slowdown in down payment assistance request. So we're trying to get that money out the door as soon as possible, so that way we are not in compliance, so that we are maintaining compliance with the federal government and their standards. The city funds and HIF funds will still only go to eighty-one percent up to one hundred and twenty percent area median income, and that will be processed internally through the city of Gaithersburg housing staff. So only CDBG funds in households that are up to eighty percent AMI will be directly impacted with this partnership with MMP. So just to give a good chart, this is easier to read instead of someone just telling you, that first line with the differences that would change in the amount of assistance. This chart, I'm sorry, the Galp program was traditionally based off of zones, an opportunity zone and a standard zone. However, with this partnership, we would not be using the zones anymore. It'd be based off of income. So in that second column where it says twenty-five thousand or forty thousand, based on zone is incorrect. That is a typo on my part. I'm sorry. What we really meant to put in there was forty thousand dollars for anyone for up to eighty percent AMI. So those who are in a lower income, it will help them be able to afford homes as the prices are going up. The approved lenders list, instead of the city staff approving the lenders, which we are not actually trained to know much about lenders and mortgages and things like that in that aspect, MMP has trained staff to know who is a good lender within the state, and they have an approved lender list for any type, any household if they want to go through those lenders. For the first time home buyer requirement, it'll change from five years minimum to three years minimum, which aligns with the federal guidelines and the state guidelines. Advertising, right now, it is just Maureen and I that are advertising this program through the resources that we have. However, with MMP, they'll advertise directly to the ZIP codes in Gaithersburg, city of Gaithersburg Limits, and they'll be able to assist people throughout that process of not just obtaining a loan, but also any type of other type of grants that they can stack onto this additional down payment assistance. So they would have a greater down payment assistance walking into the deal. The reporting requirements, currently it is Maureen and I that report to HUD when we do the drawdowns for federal funding. However, with this new change, we will receive reports on a quarterly basis from MMP staff, making sure that we are in compliance. The good news is MMP has extensive experience working with jurisdictions in their CDBG funding, so they're very familiar with the reporting and the requirements, and that's something that we are hoping can be facilitated easier instead of us chasing down documents or trying to understand what a lender is trying to give us. Also, with matching funds, currently, we do not have matching funds. However, with the partnership, we will, they will, we will be able to provide additional funding from other sources to leverage the assistance. So MMP has other programs and other funding sources where a potential home buyer can stack on to the forty thousand dollars to increase it. And for the administrative fees, currently, it is the city staff, and we take that administrative fee out of our CDBG budget. However, if that $375,000 is given to MMP, there are no admin fees, meaning the whole hundred percent of the funding goes directly to the recipient. To give a little background on the opportunity zone, as stated, what the program currently, how it exists, is the opportunity zones, based on the green and the purple, as you see, to determine how much assistant applicant may receive based on where they purchased the home. This was created in 2016 to ensure that borrowers were able to purchase throughout all areas of the city. Staff developed two distinctive zones, which had varying funding allocations. It was twelve thousand, or it's currently twelve thousand and twenty-five thousand. These zones had varying funding allocations, offering more funds to those purchasing in an opportunity zone. So based on this map, the green zones are the opportunity zones. That is traditionally where there's the median household income is higher and the median household value is higher, meaning because the home costs more, you get more down payment assistance. For homes in the standard zone, housing costs and incomes tend to be lower than the opportunity zones. To create more opportunities for accessing for sale homes in higher cost areas, the city offered zero percent deferred loans, up to twenty-five thousand in opportunity zones versus twelve thousand in standard zones. These zones, again, were established in 2016 and were last updated in 2023 in the housing element. Since fiscal year 2021, there have been seventy-four loans in the opportunity zone and twenty-two loans in the standard zone. And based on this heat map, you'll see that there are three distinct areas where a lot of the down payment assistance has gone to. I believe that is Chase Orchard, I believe, Crown Farms and Old Town, based on the heat map of where there's centralized down payment assistance, which are great areas. And, you know, we also noticed that the intent behind that opportunity zone, standard zone, was to kind of spread it out. But as we're seeing based on the heat map, it's kind of centralized in a few areas. To continue to promote upward mobility for Gaithersburg residents, staff is proposing to shift the model from loan amounts based off of income, meaning lower income households will receive more. Increasing the amounts of assistance throughout the city, where households earn up to eighty percent AMI would receive forty thousand dollars, and households between eighty and eighty-one to one hundred and twenty percent AMI would receive up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Raising the amount of assistance would better assist lower income households or home buyers and at the high cost of housing. Though the partnership, through the partnership with MMP, lower income households, which are under eighty percent AMI, would be targeted. Larger loan amounts would have a greater impact for the lower income households, bringing down the mortgage costs as well as any other additional fees and closing costs. The great benefits of partnering with MMP is no admin fees or costs to the city, which means more of our CDBG funds go directly to the community. All the funds, like I just said, go directly to the program recipients. MMP's Partner Match Program, which is where the funds can be leveraged with MMP's own program, lump sum drawdowns from the federal government, so that way we are maintaining compliance with the federal government and do not have any timeliness penalties. We also compound multiple available assistance programs, like they can use the city of Gaithersburg program as well as Montgomery County's program in order to increase the amount of assistance per applicant. MMP has more staff and resources to better conduct outreach, process application, and disperse funds. And the city of Gaithersburg staff, we predict to see an increase in interest of the program once MMP is involved, since they have more resources in order to get the word out and to advertise or write a range of people. This chart is a comparison of different jurisdictions and their down payment assistance. The first one is Montgomery County. They have two types of down payment assistance. That's twenty-five thousand dollars. One is an employee benefit, which goes to first time home buyers that work for the county, and the other, which is zero percent loan. And there is another one just for the general public. The ones for the employee has a thirty year deferred or thirty year forgiveness, while the one to the public is, does not have a forgiveness at all. It's just a flat, when you sell the property, you have to pay it back. The city of Alexandria, they have a loan program that's no interest deferred payment. Similar to what we're proposing, they have two tiers, where the lower income assistance ranges from forty thousand to fifty thousand. And tier two ranges for moderate income, twenty thousand to thirty thousand in assistance. The city of Tacoma Park, their program is on pause right now, but they do offer or did offer ten thousand dollars for down payment assistance. And Anarundo County offers fifty thousand dollars to first time home buyers with down payment and settlement costs. The city of Rockville is currently looking to create or revamp their down payment assistance. So right now, they don't have a program at this time, but we have been working closely within collaboratively to see what type of changes or what things they want to do. As well as Montgomery County, they have told us that they are looking to increase their down payment assistance to meet the higher cost of living and the higher cost of housing. Should I pause for questions at this time before the next program?
No, no, we only have a couple more slides.
Yeah. So the next is our proposed changes to the multifamily investment loan program. As Maureen stated, the Mill, as we call it, offers loans to preserve affordable housing while enhancing energy efficiency and sustainability. These loans are available in amounts up to $250,000 with a prime minus-two percent interest rate. These types of renovations are roofing, appliances, HVAC, lighting, energy and water efficiency upgrades, hardscaping structural repairs. The program launched in spring of 2024, however, we have only received calls of interest for the program, but no applications as of yet. The reason why we would like to change this from a two percent interest or prime, yeah, dropping from two percent interest or below to zero percent is because the county currently has a program similar to this, and they have a zero percent interest program, and they have received interest and applications. So we think that maybe it could be the minus-two interest rate that could be driving people to not apply. If interest rates are seven percent right now, that's still five percent that they would have to account for in their budget. So maybe the zero percent interest might be more enticing. Even though they might not have interest, they would still have to pay it back, of course. One, another thing that we are trying to do is advertising through our landlord luncheon learns that the Community Services and Neighborhood Services divisions put on about annually, once a year. So we are trying to revamp the advertising, get the word out to landlords directly and to any type of community organization or community, like condo associations. And we are currently partnering with Neighborhood Services as they do outreach and go into the communities and investigate and inspect different properties to also spread the word that this program is available for them to make repairs. And I believe that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I want to thank you both and Tom as well by association for the work that you do. This is, this is important work for us in terms of our values and our priorities. So we're grateful for your time and efforts in executing, bringing these, these programs to life. So when it comes, I guess the first question I have is about the Maryland Mortgage Program. This is the first I'm learning about that program, which doesn't mean it hasn't existed for a hundred years. I just haven't heard of it. Do you, do you happen to know, and this, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you can give back to me with this answer if you need to. But how long has that program been around? Do you know?
Um, I don't know the exact year. I know at least the past ten to fifteen years.
Okay.
Because a lot of the other jurisdictions that they work with, they have had their program, like Montgomery County at least has maybe about ten years or so.
Okay. So it's a reasonable assurance that if we, that I guess we are moving forward. You guys are just informing us of moves that have been made or we are making. But it's, there's not really like a risk that this Maryland Mortgage Program is going to go away, and then we're going to have to revamp this again anytime soon, right? That's, it's, we're reasonably assured it's, it's here to stay.
Absolutely. In fact, the other jurisdictions have, Montgomery County has definitely said it's the best way going forward, considering it's the state that's running it technically. It's the Maryland Housing and Community Development Department. So you know where the money's going. You know that they have enough staff, and it kind of gives us peace of mind when it comes to reporting and also making sure we're targeting the demographic it's intended for.
Yeah, and that gets to my next question, which it's, there's a whole substantial list of pros about why this makes sense. There's access to more money. There's lower administrative costs for the city, and, and this DHCD at the state level has the staff to administer this, and there's the potential for better marketing and advertising of the program to the people we're trying to get to. Is there any con? Is there any downside to doing this?
Yes, absolutely. Great question. There is a con, and because it's CDBG funding, that means that we have to draw down the funds on time before May 2nd in order to not receive a penalty. That would be the biggest con, that making sure that the funds are not, they're, they're available, but they're taken out of our account quick enough and given to the state before we get a penalty from HUD.
Okay. So there's, there's some risk there that, that, because with the transaction work, that we get CDBG funds, the $375,000, and we just transfer it over to Maryland Mortgage Program? Is that how that works?
Yes, yes.
So we have to make sure that they correctly account for it, so they spend down our $375,000 in a timely manner?
We would actually take it out from our federal account beforehand, because HUD does give us guidelines for lump sum withdrawals. So the only thing right now is the timing, because we have to do it by May 2nd. We're trying to just make sure everything's in order and our reporting by the time May 2nd is up to par to HUD's deadlines. So really, it's, we're doing it in advance according to HUD's guidelines. It's not necessarily that they take it out for us or on a piecemeal basis. One lump sum checked to them, but we just have to do that one lump sum before May 2nd.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, comments?
If I may, just also to evaluate the partnership, right, we're going into this with giving them a year worth, right? So they're starting with CDBG funding. We may evaluate shifting more of city funds to the program, but we want to make sure that the program and the partnership runs the way we expect it to run, and so we'll be evaluating that progress over the year.
That makes sense. Okay, we're going to go to Neil and then to Jim.
So question first on the M I L program, which is not performing at the moment. What, what are the qualifications for a building in order to qualify for access to the funds from this program? Is it a value? Is it average rental price or unit value for a condo?
No, it is, our, our main criteria is it is a multifamily, meaning it could be condos or apartments. And we also look for those that are more naturally occurring, affordable homes, meaning they're built at like nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies, they need some upgrades, they are not energy efficient, something that was just built maybe ten years ago. It could still qualify if they prove in their application. We need a new HVAC or we have roofs that need to be repaired based on the storms. But we are really looking for more of older homes that are naturally occurring, affordable, because we don't want those costs to be shifted to the tenants to raise their rent.
So what, is there a specific guideline around how you define naturally occurring affordable?
So normally, because we have our set guidelines of what is affordable rent in the city of Gaithersburg based on our area median income calculations, we will look to that as well in the, in the application package to see if they are at or below, or if they receive li tech or any type of other, other assistance in their financial packet to see if they are considered by state and federal government as naturally occurring affordable or by our standards based on how much they charge for rent. But again, it's not a hard set guideline, since right now, we're just trying to get people to apply to use it, because we do see a lot of properties that are kind of subpar or that could use the upgrades.
Yeah, I see that in the rental market. I'm just trying to get my head around where a condo building would fall into this category. Most of them don't seem to fall into the affordable category at this point.
Yeah, not at this point, but we, we are just anticipating that this program be long lasting. So eventually, they might, but we don't want to just cut it off at just multifamily, want to keep it open for future growth as it's a revolving funding.
Okay. I mean, the reason I keep coming back to condos is I know of a number of condo buildings that are twenty, twenty-five, thirty years old that are in need of upgrade, but they're probably not considered affordable by any reasonable standard.
Yeah, they won't qualify.
As expected. Now, I've heard rumblings that the county is planning on changing its formula for what constitutes an MPDU and how they're working with it. Is that going to impact us in any way?
Not at this time, not until we see what the county is going to do. We know that they are producing a research packet that should be produced in the next month or two, but not that, not yet, not until we see what's going on. So at this point, our affordable housing regulations stand defining MPDUs and affordable units.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for the presentation. This will be one of those for the benefit of the public questions. So when we're talking about AMI right now, are we using roughly ninety-two, ninety-three thousand dollars as the, as the AMI number? So eighty percent of that is roughly seventy-three thousand on the, at, at the floor? Or I guess at the ceiling, if you're making less than seventy-three thousand?
Yes, so we have different calculations in the city of Gaithersburg when it comes to the AMI. So when we use the city's calculation, not just HUD's calculation, that can go up to about seventy, eighty thousand dollars for, for the eighty percent for a household of four, I believe. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, so forgive me for that. But it is, it is advertised on our website. That does change annually. We are expecting it to change in May when HUD releases its new guidelines and we have to recalculate the AMI levels all over again, so.
Okay, very good. So a great program for anybody who's, you know, making, you know, that's seventy, that, like I said, it's workforce housing. And people get this idea of affordable housing being section eight or something like that. Like, these are, you know, professionals that have jobs and, and they're, you know, trying to be able to afford to live here in the city of Gaithersburg. To that end, we talked about how we're marketing the GALP program. I'm a big, big fan of this program and, and want, you know, more people to be able to have access to this. When in the, in the home buying process, and just for full disclosure to the public, I, I got my real estate license last year. So I know a lot more about this than I used to. But when in the process would someone be looking towards this program? Is it, you know, when they're getting pre-qualified to buy houses, when they've identified a house in the city? When would we, when would somebody need to know about this and then start that process?
Sure, we try to do outreach to anybody who might be a prospective homeowner by, or a home buyer. But really they're coming to us once they enter into a sales contract. Yep, so we're working one-on-one with the lenders. We're not working with the, the purchasers. And so once they have the sales contract, then they can come to us and we are then just getting the required documentation and whatnot, so.
And is it the lender that suggests to the homeowner that this program's available?
Yes, and so I think that's, that has been a challenge we've had is that maybe miscommunication with some of the lenders and the lenders are the ones working directly with the borrowers. And then there's some confusion from the borrowers. Our process for vetting lenders is not thorough. So that is something that MMP would be super helpful with is, is, is doing that vetting process for us and having lenders that are much more familiar with the programs that are available to first-time home buyers.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense, because I'm thinking, you know, how, how would a home, I, I, you know, I, I had somebody who had moved out of the neighborhood. Said, didn't Gaithersburg have something? But they were no longer eligible because they'd moved out of the city. But just, you know, what, as the, the program evolves, you know, finding those opportunities to, whether it's real estate agents, whether it's lenders, you know, anybody in that space to, to recognize that, that the help is there. Is there, I'm just wondering as far as like how, how lenders are like calculating people's costs, right? Like, we're, we're looking at the numbers and we're looking at them going down, you know? Is, is it something that needs to be made, you know, aware to a lender? Like, because they've already been pre-qualified at the point that they're getting to this point, oh, you can get, you know, down payment assistance. They've already had to put down some earnest money at this point. They've already had to have been pre-qualified to be under contract. So it's not something that's changing the affordability. It's something that the, the lenders already decided that they can afford it. So that's where I'm wondering, are there opportunities to, to make it something that makes buying a house in Gaithersburg more affordable and gets them over that hump? Because theoretically, the bank has already decided that they can afford to buy that house.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know about you, Councilmember McNulty, but I was approved for something well beyond what I would call affordable for my budget, right? And I think that practice is still mu- very much in place. So what the bank decides is affordable doesn't necessarily comport with what the home buyer would determine is affordable for their budget.
Great point, great point. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. This is good and great stuff, so, so thank you for, for bringing this. Question, in terms of the Maryland program, when would we begin to work, to work with that program?
As soon as possible. We already have a draft MOU that we're working on.
And can we, can we get some mid-year report in terms of improvements that we see? You're not going to make us wait a whole year, are you?
No, absolutely not. No, I think that will be great for you and the public to know that the changes in the program have been effective. And if it hasn't been effective, what can we change or what can we do better?
Okay, all right, fantastic. Also, in terms of the reporting, with the Maryland program, we're, we're going to get additional reporting, more extensive reporting. What are some of the, the reporting outcomes that we'll see that we don't see currently?
So with the Maryland mortgage program, you'll see more detail, not just of where the households are, household demographics, things that HUD already collects and that we already collect internally. But they will also do a comparison to other jurisdictions and other areas of home, how much a home costs in Gaithersburg compared to Greenbelt and whether or not the down payment assistance is making an actual effective dent on bringing the housing cost down.
Okay, all right, well, and race, gender are going to be, okay, all right, demographics will be there as well. And if I could read mine, oh, here's, I know what this says. Is there a connection with you and the Financial Empowerment Center? Do, okay, there's some pass-through from, from the folks who go to the, to the FEC.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, thank you very much.
Jamil.
Sure, good evening, everybody. A few questions on the partnership with MMP. So we transfer three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five thousand and they completely yuck things up. Do we, can, can we claw back the money?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, or if we don't like, we, we, you have this sort of criteria, if you want to evolve the criteria, you have full hand on that?
No, that, that criteria is set by HUD, so we can't deviate a lot from the eighty-one percent AMI.
No, sorry, I'm talking about like the amount of assistance or some of the others.
Yes.
Okay, so if you wanted to go to fifty thousand or something else based on zone, you could do that with MMP.
Correct.
What's their capacity to take this on? Because I looked at their website and they have only, I think, three or four counties and I think two other cities, Baltimore and Laurel. So if we came and Rockville came and everybody came in, they can handle like all of our jurisdictions?
Yes, in fact, currently the, the bigger counties that have a partnership with them give them millions of dollars and we're only giving them three hundred and seventy-five, so to them, they were saying how small of an amount it was compared to what they, they're actually looking for more jurisdictions to partner with them to make it more unified, to get the word out to the public as well as streamline the home buying process for many home, potential homeowners.
Okay, and there are no fees taken from the money to, to operate it? Okay, and then picking back on what Councilmember Harris said, on the mil or M I L program, so it can be any condo association or H O A that has condos or multifamily pieces in them. How do you, you talked about your outreach and your lunch with landlords. How do you know like what the awareness of these programs are? Because I didn't know about some of these, you know, as I, from reading the packet and coming on board. How do folks know about them?
That's what we're working on. I think this first year, since it was a newly launched program, we didn't know exactly how to advertise it, but to the landlords through our Neighborhood Services Division. Now we're taking a different approach of being more in person at the lunch, talking to them. When we go do our monitorings, also offering it to our different, different multifamily units around, as well as the investigators through Neighborhood Services, when they see something, they can do direct, you know, advertising or at least a suggestion. We're still looking for any other suggestions. If you have any other suggestions, we're more than welcome to make those changes too.
Careful what you ask for. And then I, I, I'm not super familiar with the whole CBDB, CDBG grant process, but that's subject to annual appropriations from Congress and sort of the budget cycle. So that could be subject to changes or turmoil based on the current environment.
The good news is that funding that we are hoping to give to MMP is already there in our account.
They can't claw back.
Correct, yeah, it's already there, so that's the hope that it stays there.
Thank you. Rob?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Brittany, Maureen for, sorry, Maureen, Brittany and Tom for, for your opportunity today. First question, I guess maybe a Tom question, is implementing this program and recognizing that our state partners are going through fiscal challenges now and probably for the immediate, near-term, midterm and possibly long-term future. Is there anything we're seeing from Annapolis that would impact the funding for this program? The resourcing for those folks that Councilmember Herman- Hernandez was just mentioning? Considering they're not charging us a fee?
It's a fair question, and as you know, so much of that remains unknown. But as you probably have also heard, housing is certainly a priority for this administration. Judging by the bills put forth this year and investment put into DHCD over the last couple of years. At this moment, I don't see any cause for concern about downsizing in that department. That's the best way I can answer it right now.
Harkening back to our, our, our CDBG and GALP presentation from a few years back, as I recall, about a third of the funding went to admin costs and I think those were directly for personnel on staff. If, and if my memory is, my memory is correct, great, if it's not, just let me know. But if it is correct and the funding goes to the state to administer the program, what will happen to the administrative costs that were being incurred? And if there were personnel associated with those costs, what then?
Yes, so the, we have a twenty percent cap on public service and administrative costs, basically. And with that, yeah, there are two different funding sources for that, but with that, even though we wouldn't be using it for a GALP, which traditionally right now, we have not been using our admin fees to the full extent for a GALP in order to get the funding directly to the community. It would just go right back into our admin fees for emergency assistance or for other programs that, CDBG programs that we, we use or we partner with other communities, like Rebuilding Together, other partners.
Okay, so, so the, the admin fees did not come from the CDBG funding itself? It was just decisions we made from a budgetary perspective?
No, it, it does come from CDBG, but what she's saying is the twenty percent cap is still there, doesn't go away just because we're siphoning off some of this money, because they still run other programs.
Okay, so we're sending the actionable funding to the state, retaining the admin amounts from the CDBG pot of money, but we're going to then utilize that admin for other programs that would fall under the auspices of that program. See? Well, thank you. Okay, I don't know if it was well said, but I was just trying to make sense of it in my mind. You mentioned the Maryland offices running it by zip code. Will the funding made available from the city be only available for purchases of homes within the municipal limits of the city?
Yes, we made sure that in our MOU is explicitly stated just the city of Gaithersburg limits. And we also are going to include the map of the city limits, because something could say Gaithersburg, but it's not actually in the city limits.
Yeah, Comptroller had a fun time with that a few years back, but yeah, I mean, it's good that we've got checks in place to make sure that the funding is utilized for housing within the city limits itself. And you guys have been thinking about that. The county, the state, county, city programs that you mentioned on your slides, are they additive benefits for, for home buyers? Or are, do they, will they offset each other? If, for example, you get a city grant, can you get a county grant?
Absolutely.
And not have it offsetting? Okay, so they'll, they'll, they're additive, they layer?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Good. And then last question is, as I recall, the GALP program and the spending formula were passed via resolution. And I think I heard the mayor say that this is just informative, that we wouldn't have to approve the changes to the program, including sending the funding to the state and entering into a MOU. Maybe this is a frank question. If, if it was passed via resolution and the contours of their resolution were stating how the program is to be administered, I would just ask you to confirm that this is in fact a, something that's within city manager authority and doesn't have to be run back through us through formal resolution pathways.
I don't see where that would be a problem, no.
Okay. That is my laundry list of questions.
Okay, well, I'm going to invite anybody from our Zoom audience. If you'd like to testify, if you have a question, comment on this, use the Zoom raise hand function and I'll call on you. And I would invite people in the audience in person, but there are no people from the public here. Okay, I see a question from the public on Zoom. Tech team, if you could bring up David Mullins, that would be great. David, you know the rules, unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Yes, I do. Can you, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Good evening, David Mullins, Gateway Apartments, and thanks for taking my comment. Comment, you're related to the, to the Gateway Apartments, because our current tenant association president reached out about the, the mil to our property management and was like, hey, just wanted to, to raise awareness, because he's a very astute individual and follows city things. And actually kind of connected it to some asks about things that the tenant association improvements we were trying to see and didn't, you know, didn't get, I, I don't, I think he might have copied Neighborhood Services on that. But regardless, didn't get much of a response, but I, I bring that up to mention perhaps in the, in the landlord luncheons, if, if you can remind them that tenants' associations are often good partners for this sort of thing and, and plugged into this kind of stuff, that would be good. But yeah, appreciate the information as usual this evening. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, and we will note that remark. I, I saw a, a nod of the head from our staff here, so, so thank you, David. Any other testimonies going once, going twice? Okay.
Mr. Mayor? I got a, a text from former Councilmember Monroe with a, a suggestion.
Sure.
Which I thought was a good one, just suggesting that perhaps local church congregations and even schools within the city limits would be good opportunities to spread the word, so I wanted to pass that along. Thank you to former Councilmember. Good idea. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, a clarification and I guess somewhat of an endorsement. The AMI, area median income, eighty percent is actually, we're wealthier than was suggested. It's about ninety-seven thousand. Thank you. For the eighty percent. The endorsement more, Sharon Disk, our Economic Development Manager, long before she was on our team, was running a nonprofit out in Washington County where all home buyers seeking support went through the MMP program out in Washington County. And she considered it to be very successful and a great help to the buyers. So she's not here tonight, but I know I can speak confidently that she thought this was the right move for the city to do as well, based on her experience.
All right.
Just a, a question on that. I know the state agency that administers this program publishes its own AMI list. I don't know if it's copacetic with ours. It may all come from HUD or not, but we just want to confirm which AMI we're using, particularly because this agency does publish its own list.
Which AMI are we using?
We will be using the one that's published by HUD and using HUD's calculation to calculate our AMI locally.
That'll be stated in the MOU.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Just one last thing. It felt like it flew under the radar, but there is a name change.
Oh, yes. Another big change, instead of calling it Gallup, sounds like a cat kind of doing something. We want to call it the Gaithersburg Down Payment Assistance, something that's more clear, people know what it is. There's no confusion where it is and what it is.
G-DAP.
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah, G-DAP, okay.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, thank you for letting us know that and thanks for the presentation. Not seeing anybody. Um, not seeing anybody else aching to speak or ask questions. Um, I will remind everyone that our next regular meeting of the mayor and council is next Tuesday. Usually they're on Mondays, but we have President's Day holiday coming up. So it's on Tuesday the eighteenth and until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.